I'd like to call to order the Avalon City Council meeting, which will also include a meeting of the City Council acting as the Oversight Board of the successor agency to the ACIA. Will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Placing your hand over your heart, begin.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. This holiday season has taken a number of families and friends by surprise and provided a lot of grief and sadness, and we would like to acknowledge the passing of Bobby Machado, Frosty, Jim Frost, Betty Halverson, Swede Foot, Rocky Reinhardt, Carlos Montano Senior, Jean Crowe, Dean Davies, who used to be a fireman here in Avalon years ago, and Mitchell Riplinger, who is Kathy Moran's cousin, and he passed away at the age of 16. So if we could please have some moments of silence. Denise, if we could please have the roll call?
Councilmember Cassidy?
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Sampson?
Here.
Mayor Protem Olson?
Here.
And Mayor Marshall?
Here. We have a couple of presentations. The first one is not on the agenda, but we welcome Chief Krug. So please come forward.
Thank you very much. Mike Krug, 420 Avalon Canyon, Honorable Mayor, Council Members and City Staff. Before I get to the main reason why I'm here at the podium tonight, the mayor talked to me today, and she's received several questions about our emergency notification system, and could the same thing happen here that happened in Hawaii? While I'm not familiar with the specifics of how the emergency notification system for the state of Hawaii works, on our Code Red emergency notification systems, there are about four fail safes where it asks you, "Are you sure?" Before you send this, click this. So there are several safety valves built in to prevent a message being sent incorrectly. And I'd encourage everyone to go to the City of Avalon website. They can click on the Code Red logo and sign up for the Code Red emergency notification system.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next Wednesday, January 24th, in Santa Monica, the Los Angeles County Fire Department Lifeguard Division will be holding an emergency medical services recognition ceremony. This event honors outstanding customer service that has been delivered by public safety professionals and good Samaritans. One of the groups to be honored is a team of your local first responders, some of which are standing behind me, specifically from the Avalon Harbor Department, Harbor Master J.J. Poindexter, Harbor Patrol Officer Ray Boyd, Harbor Patrol Officer Eloy Rodriguez, from the Avalon Fire Department, Captain Dave Long, Engineer Frank Menudo, firefighter George Hernandez, Reserve Firefighter Code Enforcement Officer Christian Cisneros, from the Los Angeles County Fire Department, Captain Steve Powell, Captain Matt Lutton, Captain Gary Black, Lifeguard Paramedic Sean Kennedy, and Engineer Tim Gilman. The call for service that brought this team together and for which they're being recognized occurred on December 7th, 2017. At approximately 3:45 PM, Avalon Harbor Patrol Officers and Baywatch Avalon responded to a report of an unknown medical problem onboard a vessel in Avalon Harbor. On scene, they located a conscious adult male in severe medical distress. Because of the confined spaces onboard the vessel, his specific location in the vessel, the severity of medical conditions, high winds and sea state, the decision was made to tow the vessel to float five where additional manpower, specialized equipment, and safer working conditions could be employed. During this process, incident management initiated several tasks beyond the extrication and treatment of the patient, including the immediate request for a medevac helicopter, landing zone coordination, and documentation. Immediately following the extrication of the patient, all units staged at the Catalina Island Medical Center while awaiting the arrival of a Los Angeles County Fire Department medevac helicopter. While staged at the hospital, the patient went into cardiac arrest, which required multiple medical interventions, including to provide CPR, an advanced airway with artificial respirations, fluid and medication delivery, and all this occurred seamlessly with the ER physician, nurses, and staff. Ultimately, the patient regained and lost pulses several times, and when loaded aboard the helicopter, had regained a heartbeat, but only with assisted ventilations. So now what makes this incident so remarkable is not only is this patient still alive, but he's making a miraculous recovery at a Long Beach hospital. In emergency medicine, there's something referred to as a chain of survival, and that speaks to the entire first responder system, where each person or link in the chain has their role to play for a successful outcome like this. I'd like to point out, it takes a team, and it begins with dispatchers taking 911 calls, assistance from deputies, hospital staff, helicopter crews, and civilians, just to name a few. So thank you for your time, and thank you for continuing to support us, and thank you for letting us be of service.
I don't know, for those who were mentioned that are here, do we have the ability to have a quick photo op with them?
Of course.
Okay. I don't know who has a camera, but somebody's got a phone.
Everyone who's involved with...
But for those whose names were mentioned, if you would please come forward, for starters? J.J.?
J.J. Ray.
Yes. Ray, Eloy, Dave Long, Frank Menudo, George, Kristin Cisneros, I don't know, is he in the room? And I don't know if anybody from the county is here?
Yes.
Oh, there we go.
There we go.
Thank you.
County Fire? Fire to Baywatch.
Yeah, thank you. Get closer, gentlemen.
Get in the middle, Mayor. Go get in the middle.
My face is right behind him.
Bob's getting...
Smile.
Getting to get the ceiling.
Thank you very much.[616.82][616.82](Applause) And Chief, Chief Krug, are all of them going over town to this awards assembly?
Yes, all the City of Avalon employees will be making the trip over on the 24th, and then we'll meet up with our LA County Fire counterparts over there.
Excellent. Be sure to get another photo op.
Will do. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you for all of your service, ladies and gents. Okay, now we have a presentation.
Good evening. I'm Cindy Cassidy. I'm actually going to be giving the presentation tonight for this community art project. I was really the only one available at the moment. A couple other participants were traveling, and we do also have Kevin Hunky in the audience, who's a part of organization of this as well. So the purpose of the short presentation is to talk about a community mural, which is now going to be dubbed the Beacon Street Community Mural. The objective is to beautify the fencing around the construction project primarily on Beacon Street. What used to be a gorgeous green space in town is now underway of construction of Vons. Unfortunately, the fencing in the way that that looks is a real, it's a center focal area in town, and it's a real eyesore looking at this large construction project. And so the only way to make light of that type of situation is to make art. So that was the premise of the coming together to do a community art project. It's a grassroots community art project, independently organized, inclusive of anyone who wants to participate. All materials will be provided to retain the continuity of the project, and obviously no age limits to participating in the project. The mural itself is going to be seven anchor pieces, as we're calling them. They're canvas treated pieces, ready for the elements, and there'll be very basic panels that are just fruits, vegetables, food-related, you know, chickens, things like that. You'll see a few other photos. And the idea is not to make it about anything particular, other than, you know, hopefully seeing some fresh fruits and vegetables coming in our new grocery store, and then also, obviously, beautifying this area in town. So there's another example. It's very basic art. We want to incorporate some elements from Catalina as well, such as the one you can see here with a casino in it. And here's an idea of what this will look like with some color added to it. Let me keep going. In between the anchor panels, we will be putting in three-by-three-foot Catalina tiles that will go in between the anchor tiles along the streets. These are original Catalina tile designs, and we're hoping that they're all painted by groups or individuals. We are reaching out to the Avalon School Art Program, the primetimers. Dan Hunky's going to provide some tiles or bring the primetimers up to help paint. Families, individuals, any nonprofits, pretty much anybody who wants to participate in this. The tiles are easy. They're three-by-three foot, and they're really going to look great on the project. We have basic color palettes. There's discussion of changing the color palettes for the tiles, but it's not that big of a deal. I just threw that in there to show that we will have some continuity in what the art would look like. And this is an idea of what the finished project will be. It is, like I said, some anchor canvas tiles, and then these small Catalina ones that will be mixed in between those anchor ones. So it really changes the perspective of what that fencing looks like, and it also beautifies the area for the visitors that come to town, all the golf cart rentals that are passing by, and just, you know, really puts a more positive view on the area. So the finer details, again, seven anchor panels, approximately 30 Catalina tile panels. Happy, happy to provide more of those if we can paint them all in one day, and there's still some interest to do some more. Each panel is coated to withstand the elements, and then each panel will have installed grommets and attached directly to the fencing along Beacon, Catalina, and Sumner Streets. And I wanted to point out that there would be some art on the side streets as well. The total cost of the materials is approximately $1,500. That's being self-funded by a small group of us right now. Anybody who wants to participate or help in that, obviously, we welcome that. We won't be able to accept any donations above the amount of the cost of the supplies, but if there is desire to do more tiles, if there's space, then obviously, we would take support to help fund that. There's also going to be a large anchor tile that will allow for the names of the participants and/or donators to the cost of supplies, just an opportunity for people to put their names on something. So this is a very basic example that I threw together of what that might look like, but an opportunity for kids in town who are participating to actually write their name on this big anchor tile and be able to see their name on something that's public, which will be really nice for anybody participating. Then some basic questions that we've already received. Do I have to paint a tile on a particular art day? The answer is no. You can pick up a canvas tile the day that we begin the painting. You can, you know, paint it at home. If we have a way to transport some of the paint, happy to donate that to those who can't be available in February. Do I have to use the supplies offered? No. You can use your own paints, but please remember that how the weather elements will affect the product that you use. And can I make my own canvas art to put up? And, you know, upon talking about it, the answer is unfortunately no, because we want to keep some sort of symmetry to the public art project. So the logistics of this is on Sunday, February 11th, at Tremont Hall. We'll be inviting anyone and everyone from the community to participate from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM to paint a particular tile, or two, or three. Kevin Hunky is going to be the point person for organizing participants coming in. We want to make sure we stay within the occupancy numbers for the Fire Department for Tremont Hall, and also that we have plenty of space for people at particular tables to paint and to move around. So you can reach Kevin on her cellphone, either by text or phone, 805-390-3767, or you can email. The email's up above here. And we just asked that you RSVP, so we don't have everybody showing up at one moment, and we don't have the available space. So we'll structure that throughout the day. And that's all I thought. You'll see some more information in the paper and also on Thursday updates and some flyers around town. And I don't know if anybody in the audience has any questions, but...
It's a great project. Thank you, Cindy and Kevin and all those involved. That's a great idea. Love it. Thanks. Okay. And then you're gonna... Oh, never mind. Okay. Now we have announcements and written communications. Are there any?
I have some announcements. It's kind of combined with the city manager one, so I'll just do it right now. We did, at the December 19th, you authorized for us to go out to RFP for several contracts, trash, the shower, the restrooms, and the B contract. We have issued the RFP for the public showers, as well as the restroom contract, and you have an option to combine the two, if you would like to do both. They are either online, or you can get a copy of it at our front desk. There's a mandatory job walk for both contracts on Thursday, January 25th. The restroom contract begins at 9:00 AM, and the shower one would start at 11:00 AM. Both proposals are due by Thursday, February 15th, at 4:00 PM, and you can contact City Hall to get that information, if I said it too fast. The next request for proposal for city trash will be available by Friday, this Friday, the 19th. And just like the public restroom and the showers RFP, you'll be able to find a copy of that online or at the front counter. Then, as the city clerk, the period to file the paperwork to run for city office is closed last Friday at 5:00 PM. We have a total of eight candidates, two for mayor, and six for council members, and their nomination papers have been sent to LA County for signature verification. So hopefully soon, I'll have a list of qualified candidates.
Great. Thank you.
Oh, I have one more. I'm sorry.
Yes.
The RFP for the chairlift for Beacon Hill Senior Housing is hopefully going to be completed by next week.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Department head reports.
Okay. Bob Greenlaw, Director of Public Works. Three items for the Public Works Department. Storm damage. We're working on Step Beach this week, so that was the last of the beaches to get fixed up as far as the holes next to the seawall and the sand. And we've ordered rail for the South Beach piece that was damaged, and also on Pedley Beach Road, there was a small section of rail damage. We received a new mower for the cemetery. It's a very nice mower, and we're doing training on it right now. So that should make us more efficient, get the work done quicker up there. And we started work on the contract documents for the repair to the Green Pier. We have a $200,000 budget for that, to get that repaired this fiscal year.
For the Green Pier?
The Green Pier.
Oh, really? Okay.
There's a lot of stuff underneath, like tiles, that needs some work.
Bob, can I... What is the white PVC pipe that's exposed at Step Beach?
That is a drainage line, okay? And we cleaned that out the other day.[1296.46][1296.46](Laughter)
Good evening.
Good evening.
The Finance Department has our work cut out for us for the next five months. We're diligently working to complete three essential tasks in the coming months. The 2018 mid-year financial results, the 2017 audited financial statement, and the 2019 budget. First, we will be presenting the fiscal year 2018 mid-year financial results at the next City Council meeting in February. And the fiscal year 2017 financial statements will be presented in March. The Finance Department is compiling the required information to provide the auditors for their review. And then we have already begun the fiscal year 2019 budget process. Our plan is to have a first draft for your review in April, and then adoption before June.
Great. Thank you. That is quite a lot.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmen, Councilwomen. Just a little update on the harbor side of the picture here. We're getting ready to replace the hinges on floats number five. Warehouse crew's getting it all set up this week, and starting next Wednesday, we'll be shutting that float down and replacing the hinges that connect the two floats together. So we're making progress on our maintenance side of it, so we're moving right along. Had a great weekend, a lot of boats. I mean, one day was 80 degrees, and next day was dense fog. So the ones that got here had to stay here. So I'm sure they spent a lot of money in town. Anyway, we're hanging in there. We're going forward, and we appreciate your time.
No, thank you very much.
Good evening. Really quick, just want to give everybody an update on Vons. I don't want you to think that they're stagnant. They're actually, the grading is finished, and the site now needs to sit there so that it can reach the compaction level that it needs for construction. They weren't sure if it was going to go between 60 and 90 days. We've heard that it may be now a shorter time before that compaction level is reached. They are doing periodic borings or corings to test for the compaction. We've gone live, soft live, like you think of a soft opening, with our electronic software for issuing our building permits electronically. And we are now going, looking at using that same software for code enforcement as it relates to nuisance abatement only, not vehicle parking, just nuisance abatement. And we've received our grant agreement for the LCP grant for that work, and the next step is we'll be issuing the RFP for the consultant that will be assisting us with completing those tasks for the sea level rise study and things to complete that portion of the LCP update.
Great. Thank you. That's all the departments we have? Oh, no, here we go. Excuse me.[1496.01][1496.01](Laughter)
Couple of quick ones as well. Thank you and good evening. We also are going live here real shortly with our Recreation Management Software, putting final touches on the website and integration with the city's website. About last meeting on Monday forthcoming, and then we should be by mid next week, end of next week, live with that. We kicked off our tumbling program, Tumble Dance, Ninja, and Mommy and Me instructors coming from over town with about 45 in that program. Off to a good start. We kicked off flag football this past weekend with the first round of games with 72 children in the program, a third, fifth grade program, and a sixth, eighth grade program, up from 66 last year. You might have seen Ryan Montgomery with the Lego Club on Wrigley Stage this past weekend. He has been talking about doing Legos here in town for a while, and we took the opportunity to have a staff person meet him out there, haul his Legos down, bend the Legos down from the house. We had about 30 kids out for the first weekend.
Wow.
12 to 12 on Sundays. It's a six-week period that we're trying it. So Lego Club with Ryan, his goal is to take them to Legoland at some point, so maybe we'll work towards that. Wednesday, the 24th, our next primetimers program, planning and lunch. We're doing with Catalina Karen from Catalina Creations. She's going to help us plan a little succulent pot. She was over town this past week picking up supplies for that. It's $5, includes your lunch. It's at Singing Waters. You can register here. At City Hall, it's 11 to 1. And a couple things that we're looking into. You may have heard that the spin studio is closing at the end of the month. So apparently, we own the bikes. We are looking at maybe providing a few of those classes at Tremont Hall. This just came down to us last week, so we've got a couple weeks to try and pull something together, so we'll get back to you with that. But possibly a few of the classes up at Tremont Hall. And then we've also been asked to look at maybe assisting with the golf operation with the island company. So we're doing some legwork now to kind of look at, you know, their balance sheets and what that entails, trying to get some of the key players in town that may have been involved in past to see what that might look like to maybe help operate that. So we'll get back to you with that if something comes forward with that.
Did you say we own the spin bikes?
Apparently, we own the spin bikes, yeah. The city... I've heard that from a half a dozen people. I don't know the history behind it, but worst cases, we'll collect them, and we'll put it to the warehouse until I can do our fitness center.
Why don't you put a couple up right here at the City Hall, and then we run our break, we can spin a little bit.
There we go. There we go.
Okay.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Being that there are no other departments, we will have council member reports. Who would like to begin?
City Attorney.
Oh, I'm sorry, City Attorney.
We are trying to arrange for the next council meeting to have it be focused on housing. And so if we accomplish that, Elizabeth Hole will be here in my place to direct you and give you options on housing, including redevelopment, and not only what the city can do, but how to use your money that you have in housing authority.
And with that, Denise, if this isn't appropriate time to mention it, CNC? Because can you talk about them?
I would rather that wait till February 6th, Annie, when Elizabeth Hole's here.
Okay. Perfect. All right.
I do have one more thing to say. I wanted to give you an update on the cannabis application process. We're still, staff is still developing a rubric for it, and coming up with a comprehensive fee schedule that's attached to it, and it's tentatively earmarked to be on the February 20th agenda.
Okay. Perfect. That's it from City Manager, Department Head.
I mean, the people, your heads. Give me your head.
Do you want me to go?
Please.
Okay. I attended the Gateway City's Council of Government Board meeting. Couple notable items. One, the annual homeless count that will happen on January 24th of this year. I understand that the City of Avalon will be participating, and I'm wondering if we have any details on that. If, Amanda, if you have any details on that?
I don't have a lot of details, but we will be participating in that. I actually spoke to the lady's name, who's the supervisor's associate.
Herlinda?
Herlinda. with the people in the county to set up that count, how we can accomplish it. We'll be reaching out to the church and the sheriffs and the Harbor Department in order to try to track down those individuals, so we make sure we get everyone counted.
Oh, perfect, okay. So you don't need any assistance from the community to do walkarounds or anything?
I think Rosio was planning on utilizing some of the seniors at high school who need some of their community service hours.
Perfect.
But if she ends up needing extra people, we'll be sure to let everybody know.
Okay. And it's just nice to see that Avalon is showing up on the reports from the Gateway Cities so that our numbers are represented, because there is funding and there is options available. We have options for people in town that we can utilize on the mainland, so that count is important. Next, the, there are many Metro updates, but the ones that affect the City of Avalon, it's a little bit early to mention it, but I don't want it to get lost in the fray. Starting January of 2019, the Blue Line, which is the train in Long Beach that many of our local residents use, is going to have major shutdowns from January to April. And this is from Long Beach to the Willowbrook stations. Again, it's not happening until January 19th, but it will be significant. There is several million dollars of rework that's being done, upgrades, new platforms, and safer train systems, so keep that in mind. It's also worth a review to look at Mayor Garcetti's plan of 28 transportation projects by the year 2028. For those of you that are interested in transportation-related projects, the Eco Rapid Transit and the I-70 Early Ten Action Plans are, do affect Avalon in the sense that a majority of our visitors coming to and from the island do so via the 710, so important to us. And then on February 9th, there, the Gateway Cities is hosting a transportation summit that will be held in Long Beach. Robert, Mayor Robert Garcia and Metro will be primarily putting that on. Guests will include the CEO of Metro, Caltrans representatives, federal representatives, including from the Department of Transportation, and I know that myself and City Manager Denise Raddie will be attending that. And then the last update that I wanted to mention, Bob covered all of the items on the budget, that we are going to start the budget process sooner rather than later this year. But I would be curious to know what the pros and the cons are of doing a two-year budget cycle. I'm not sure if that's something the city would even entertain, but just given resources and...
Bob had talked about that last time at our budget. He had addressed that last year.
I would like to start a two-year budget, but not this year. I'd like to start the two-year budget at the next budget cycle. Then the sitting, city council members will have a year in and then understand the operations of the city, and then be able to adopt the budget for the next two years.
Okay, great.
And that's the plan there. I think a two-year budget is a good idea. It's the same amount, almost the same amount of administrative time and your time to review everything and adopt it. What we would do is we'd have a two-year budget and then review it every six months. So we would still have the review process that we would have whether it was one year or two year.
Perfect, that's great news. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Councilmember Hernandez?
I'm good, I'm...
Okay. Councilmember Sampson?
Yeah, just a couple of little things. I want to remind everybody, carry the blue bags when you walk your dog, because I'm getting a lot of complaints that there's a lot of dog mess all over. And I understand the issue, because I got a little grand dog, and I take one out, and sometimes you forget your bag, but there's bags pretty much everywhere, you can find them, and you can find something to pick up the stuff when, after your dog goes. And then pick up a couple of other piles too, if you can, that's what I usually do, just to keep the lots clear. Instead of us coming down on people and creating more ordinances and laws and, you know, and bringing the strong arm of the city council down, we don't want to do that. We want everybody to enjoy their pets, but we need the town to be clean as well, and it kind of stinks in certain lots and areas where people turn their backs or their heads when their dog goes, and it's just not right. When you have a dog, that's part of the whole deal, it's like, you know, it's one of the responsibilities. I just read an email that was sent out also, a couple of weeks ago, it was from Adeline Yun, and it says, and now she is Public Affairs for Edison. "I just wanted to share that the D-SAL Grant Notice Award has been delayed to mid-January", which is actually now. "As a reminder, SCE submitted three grant applications." So we're all still waiting, anticipating what's going to go on with these Prop 1 grant funds, so that we can go ahead and figure out what's going to go on with the water situation in Avalon, which we're still waiting for. I mean, absolutely nothing has been done up to this point, so it's not, it's just a matter of time. If we don't get a lot of rain, we're going to be back into the situation we were as far as the intensity of the conversations that we were having. And that wasn't, that wasn't very fun when we were doing that, but we're going to get back into that again, because people want to know that the water supply is there for the future, we need a 20-year plan. Hamilton Cove is anticipating getting D-SAL water that we pump up the hill to Wrigley Reservoir, and then down to Hamilton Cove. That's something that I strongly support, and I want to see that, but I don't see a lot of conversation about that right now. So we're going to be pushing forward for that, for sure, at least I am from the seat that I sit in. Let's see, there was one other thing which I don't have off the top of my head, so I'm going to just pass for it right now. Thank you.
As we get ready to start another vehicle registration session, I would request the council's direction that we reinstate sound monitoring when we sticker them, because there's just a lot of noisy golf carts in town. I knew it was supposed to be self-fulfilling, and it hasn't, so I think we should do one more year of testing to see what we can get done with the noisy golf carts. Then last week, I was in Sacramento Contract Cities to meet with our legislators and just talk about the upcoming legislative session, and what the stuff that's important to us is. One of the things was, we want to make sure that the pot thing comes along and the pension things get better, and there was this kind of a scary announcement from a assemblyman from San Francisco who wants to raise the height limit around light rail stations to 85 feet. And he wants to raise the height limit within a mile of a light rail station, and with a bus stop within a quarter mile, he wants to raise the height limit to 45 feet, which could really, really mess up some mainland neighborhoods, because it's a lot of single-story stuff, two-story stuff. We would be exempt, because we're covered by the California Coastal Commission and our local coastal plans, so that's a good thing, at least in our case. And tomorrow, I'm going back to Sacramento to go to the League of California Cities Revenue Tax Committee and Community Services Committee, and I will report back next meeting about what happened.
Perfect.
Can I just comment on Council Mayor Pro Tem Olson's request for testing of the sound of all golf carts? That was a very timely and costly procedure. Could I come back with you, to you with a recommendation, if there's a certain percentage of the golf carts that we test? It's the manpower in order to do that, and if our testing pattern here was really adequate or not? Is that acceptable?
Sure, you can come back.
I'm game, I've got a couple of months.
Yeah, please. Great. Tomorrow, Councilwoman Cassidy, myself, Rhonda, and a DA, I think she's the DA in Long Beach are going to Cabrillo High School to witness one of their teen courts. It's from 3:00 to 5:00, and then I think we may be going on to an anger management program that they offer to Long Beach Unified Schoolchildren, which we are, we would be eligible to do, and we're working forward. On the 31st of January, the hospital, county fire, city fire, law enforcement, myself, Cindy, gosh...
Rhonda?
Rhonda, Department of Public, Department of Public Health, all kinds of, all the services that we hope will be providing mental health and drug and alcohol abuse programs to Avalon, because we've been kind of forgotten, so we're working at trying to do that. We're going to be meeting on the 31st at the yacht club, and so really excited about that. And then I, an announcement, the Catalina Progressive Action Coalition will be hosting the second Women's March. It will kick off with a national voter registration and mobilization to our targeting swing states to register new voters, engage impacted communities, harness our collective energy to advocate for policies and candidates that reflect our values and collaboration with our partners. But basically, it's to remind people to not become complacent. The midterms and the local elections will be happening soon, so we'd like people to get out. They're going to start at Wrigley Plaza State, to the casino and back, and the route will go, take us through the Atwater Arcade and to, in order to pass our one federal island entity, the post office. So that will be 11 o'clock on Saturday, January 20th, Wrigley Plaza State. Anything else on that today? Okay. Okay, oral communications. This is an opportunity for people from the community to speak on items that are not on the agenda. You're limited to three minutes, and no action will be taken.
I can't either.
All right, Mayor Marshall, City Council Members, Mike Sheehan, 251 East Whitley. And I'm just making an announcement today about, we're going to start up a, what you'd call a pop-up newsletter. I think the town's been a little weak on getting political and business news, and we're going to fill that gap. Like to give more transparency to the Avalon residents by providing investigative reporting on many of the issues in Avalon that seem to go quiet, or in other communities they wouldn't. A few examples, you know, I'll just give you four quick ones here within my three minutes. And we have the buses, for example. Almost $2 million plus or minus thrown into these things, completely mismanaged. Great potential, great equipment, no management of the warranty work has been followed through on these effectively. It's not rocket science, it's buses. They're electric buses, they're interesting, they take some special care, but it's been handed to the wrong people. They need some coaching on this. I worked intimately with that group and tried to make a little bit of a difference, and as you can see, they're parked out there for a lot of different reasons right now, completely unnecessarily. $2 million plus or minus, okay, that the city has paid for through county funds and all as well. The second one is a camera. Camera popped up here about a week ago over at El Encanto, and, you know, it's a little odd, it, we found it's supposedly a security camera, but trouble is it faces the wrong way, faces directly into Councilmember Sampson's front door and window. And it maybe covers about 5% to 10% of the El Encanto property. The camera needs to be remounted and faced back toward the property, not toward his house, I believe. I under, I have heard of no crime back there. Historically, there's been some harassment that's evolved out of the El Encanto project going back about three or four years ago, that was directed at one of the neighbors and the neighborhood in general. These people that decided they could start between 5:30 and 6:00 AM when the curfew is 8 o'clock, as I remember, gave tons of trouble to those neighbors. Up the street where they had some more storage, and another area, they gave tons of trouble to them, clang and bang and making noise down there. And I think that was the beginning of a little feud between some contractors, some employees of the island company on the management level. And we've seen a lot of interesting things since then. I think back then, the one that stands out most, many of us are privileged to it, was on camera, one of the managers for the island company, somebody very high up, I know him well, I know most of these people well. I'm not proud of what they did, but they're giving the bird flipping off Councilman Sampson at the Fourth of July Parade, and it was on camera. And somebody just taking pictures in general noticed the action, and there's tons of profanity used, all attacking the people there that were, the veterans actually going by during that parade. Not cool. You know, another quick one here, the aquifer situation in the canyon here, the, Mr. Rusak, I, for years, I've been following him, or sometimes he's been ahead of me, sometimes I've been ahead of him, but he'd like to get the water out of the canyon here. His organization was not able to manage Howlands. They dried up a simple well down there to a drastic point, affecting that entire area. To turn over that aquifer to that organization and that individual who controls that organization is a complete mistake. The City of Avalon paid to, if I could just have one more second, the City of Avalon paid to have the water hauled down to the, from Middle Ranch down to Howlands. We're going to pay again if they crack this aquifer. We'll get sued by the conservancy, which he controls, we'll get sued by a ton of people, but the ratepayers will pay. The last one, the casino dock, this has not been done transparently. The property was originally taken from us, and now it's secretly, we're going to be forced to lease it back from the people that stole it from us, literally. There's a stack of papers that were given to the city attorney regarding a claim of ownership for the casino property. And the casino dock here in particular, we owned it at one time. It was taken from us, and it's been secretly negotiate, they're secretly negotiating the terms of a lease. We're going to actually pay for something in a lease that was stolen from us. This is not good. So from there, I, yeah, my time, I'm done.
Okay, I would just like to say, there is freedom of the press, you're more, you know, we wish you well in, or I wish you well in your endeavor, but like with any investigative reporting, the information, information needs to be accurate. I know anything that you're going to want from the city when you're doing your reporting, if we can oblige to get you that information, so that if we're not being transparent enough, it can be out there. If we're remiss in, in some areas, we can look at that, but good luck with your venture.
Thank you. Last thing I can ask for is some facts and finding from Attorney Campbell of that stack of paper that was put on our desk. If you could please give that to the public and come up with some conclusions in law to how they actually own that property, that we are going to rent back from them after they took it from us. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Consent calendar.
There are 11 items on the consent calendar this evening. First one is actions from December 19, 2017. We're asking you to approve warrants for a total disbursement amount of $2,887,692.73, and that includes the warrants, two payrolls, and six electronic fund transfers. We're asking you to adopt the resolution accepting the fiscal year 1718's second quarter treasures report. Number four is to authorize the contract with City Fabric and the amount of $33,100 for the City of Avalon's Recreation Master Plan. Five is to make the finding that the city's contract service provider for the saltwater system engineering services, LLC, was the most efficient means to provide labor and materials for a changed condition under the city's current 2016 capital improvement program project, and to ratify approval of the expenditures in a not-to-exceed amount of $28,246.45. Number six is to authorize the purchase of fire hydrant parts not to exceed the amount of $16,000. Number seven is to authorize the purchase of the wastewater treatment plant CPAC's pump parts at a cost not to exceed $10,500. Number eight is to authorize the purchase of a refrigerated influent sampler for the wastewater treatment plant at a cost not to exceed $9,500, and make the finding that the equipment can only be purchased from one vendor. Number nine has three components, to ratify the expenditures for the patrol boat maintenance totaling $12,127.30, make the finding that the purchase was made effectively and economically without bid procedures, and to authorize the payments for the outdrive exchange in the amount of $6,058. Number nine has three components, to ratify the expenditures for the patrol boat maintenance totaling $12,127.30, make the finding that the purchase was made effectively and economically without bid procedures, and to authorize the payments for the outdrive exchange in the amount of $6,058.57. Number 10 is to approve an encroachment permit for two decks to encroach three feet each into the unimproved right-of-way of Olive Street at 125 Olive with the conditions, and make the required findings and allow the encroachment to continue as long as the structure exists, or until revoked pursuant to Avalon Municipal Code Section 4-9.109. Item 11 is the successor agency, and that's to adopt a resolution of the successor agency to the Avalon Community Improvement Agency approving a recognized obligation payment schedule, 1819, and the successor agency's administrative budget for fiscal year 2018-19. If that is adopted tonight, the Oversight Board meeting will be convening on Thursday, January 25th at 1:00 p.m.
Counsel, what's your pleasure?
I have a question on number three, and then I'd like to pull number four and 10.
Okay. Go ahead. Anybody, and anybody else wanna pull any?
Yeah, just wanna ask a question for 10, that's it.
Yeah, 10 was, 10 was one.
Okay.
What was yours, Richard? I didn't hear you.
No, 10 was, she's already presented.
Question on three then?
My question on three for Director Bob is, the certificates of deposit that are coming to maturity here shortly, are those automatically reinvested somewhere else?
Not automatically, but if we, depending on our cash flow, our projected cash flow, our capital projects, we'll be putting together our budget. We should know our longer-term projects by April when they mature, and we will probably be reinvesting those longer term, like five years, so that then they get the highest yield, which is currently at about 2.5% to 3% right now.
Great, okay, thanks.
Item number four?
I'm gonna motion on the other ones first.
Oh, sure, let's do that.
Move staff on 1 to 3, 6 to 9, and 11 and 12, no, 11.
I'll second it.
Is there any comments from the community? Are we good? Okay, call for the vote.
I don't get to vote.
Um, no, sorry. I jumped in front of you. Number four, my question is, could, the question is, could staff do this project in-house rather than go out for a contract? And if not, could you give an elaborate explanation on that, that I can just point people to hear your response?
Could staff do it? Staff could probably do it. It is a lot of money. You know, we, I think we're relying on, you know, professionals out there that do it on a regular basis. Most cities have a, you know, document that's a recreation master plan that gives them the, you know, the route to go for the next 10 years. We could pull that information, we can make a, we can make those recommendations. Our recommendation, my recommendation, is that we have an outside source do it that is non-biased, and has got the experience that does these on a regular basis. I've been through the process, part of the process and one previously, I haven't done one myself previously. What are we really looking to get out of it? I'm really looking to get out of it, you know, what size of, do we need a community center? What size of a community center we need? And I think they will help us map that out. There's been lots of talk over the years about an aquatic complex. I've seen some plans for an aquatic complex. I have my own opinions on, I'm an aquatics guy, what aquatic complex could look like, should look like here. It's a little bit different than what's being proposed, so, you know, there might be some bias in terms of, you know, staff doing it, so. Outside company coming in, the recommendation to use City's fabric, I came into the tail end of that. I think staff was really pleased with the research and the community outreach they did previously on the Avalon Fit Trail, so it seems like a nice match there. If you told me there were some things in here that maybe we could piecemeal and do ourselves, and then hand off to City Fabric, maybe we can renegotiate some of that to bring that cost down, if that's, if that's a concern.
That, that was part of it. I will preface this conversation by saying I'm supportive of having a recreation master plan. The difficulty for me is explaining out in the community what we're actually getting for, for $33,000. And for example, one of the options that remained from their original proposal to what the staff report is asking is providing general demographics of the Avalon community, and that's something staff would be doing. The other one is inventory existing recreational facilities and amenities. Again, that's something that staff would already be doing. So it's just, it was hard for me to explain, what are we really getting for this $33,000 other than a recommendation for going forward?
Yeah, some of the things that you do get with a outside company is, there is some template work out there, depending on the population, what size of, how many parks do you need, passive parks, active parks, how many tennis courts a community this size will have, how many aquatic facilities, granted we're a small, you know, small facility, you know, a skate park, you know, some of the amenities that we may not have now. There are just some, some parameters there that are general that will be used with this population that, and then ideally, they're gonna give us some help in terms of how we get there, some ideas on grants that are available, funding that's available, and some assistance with that. So those are some of the things that you would get with a company coming in and assisting with that.
Okay.
And it, I mean, and I look at like the sample size, and I go, God, that just doesn't seem like much, but...
And I, I choked when I saw the first round of numbers that came through, and I had a couple of companies ask what, they called through and asked what the budget was for it. I did let them know we had allocated the $20,000 for it. A couple of companies said, you know, these start at $75,000, so, you know, we had to do some legwork to get it to where it is. I think we still get a nice piece. 75 is a lot, 33 is a lot, certainly open to some suggestions.
Those two are great questions you asked.
Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, very insightful. I'm curious, these, this $33,000, if, do you know if any of these people that work for this company have ever been to Catalina?
City Fabric is the one that we're recommending, and they're the ones that assisted the city. We had a contract with them for the Avalon Fit Trail. They have done some workshops here in the community, so they are familiar with, you know, the community and a little bit of what it's about. They're in Long Beach, so they're about as close as you can get being outside of the city.
They did, they did workshops here before.
Correct.
Because I attended those when they asked questions, and, and the people from the community came. I'm just hoping there could be a better, I mean, a more effective way to outreach than, than expecting people to come to City Hall to answer questions. I think that's kind of limiting, and then the Hispanic population being able to, I don't know if they can go to the school, or if we can help supplement and get maybe additional information from the kids. My concern is sometimes is that if our kids have been born and raised on this island, they don't even know what the potentials are.
Right.
You know, they haven't, I mean, you're bringing forward a lot of programs that haven't been here, or tried and then coming back, but I mean, there's just a, there's just a lot over there in the real world, and for them to be able to understand that some of this could be happening here is...
And they do some modeling, I mean, they'll bring in some modeling of what, you know, some of our parks could look like, and get some feedback on those types of things, so there is some of that interaction as well.
And that will help us with our planning with projects going forward. If we need to be having pocket parks and those kinds of things, and dog park and whatever, that's, that would be good.
So they discuss those things, dog park?
All the above, yeah, they'll certainly look at that. I think what they'll find is, you know, through some community input and some of the information that we'll be giving them, is that a dog park is something that is seeked out by residents, so they'll look at ways to assist in finding property and how that might look.
What about the connection with the conservancy, let's say? Do you think that, that, that might be helpful to see what they might be able to help us provide the community as well? I mean, after all, they're pretty much setting up shop right here, right in the middle of our community, so.
I, you know, I've had just a brief conversation with them, I didn't want to go too far because I didn't know, you know, how this was gonna go tonight. They're really anxious to get started, they're anxious about talking to the island company, they're interested in talking to the conservancy, they're interested in talking to council members of the chamber and find out, just, you know, throw it out there, and just get a little wild with some ideas and see what comes of it.
And then I have one more question on that one, it was a little confusing, but I think I've sorted it out. There's this paragraph in here that talks about, you were originally proposing to use the $20,000 that was originally earmarked for upgrades to the dive park to include benches, shade seating, changing areas, and trash receptacles. And I think what you're saying now is you're, you wanna pull back that and use the $20,000 that you've already allocated, and then amend the budget, another $13.1,000?
Correct, use 13,1 out of that $20,000. I've gone to the island company, I, you know, the dive park is just a jewel out there, and it certainly, you know, I spend some time out there on a, on a regular basis, and would love to see some enhancements there. You know, there's an association with the island company out there, I've met with the island company a couple times in regards to it, within the last two weeks of the latest time. They are working on a plan for their property out there, and I think, I don't want to put the cart before the horse, let's see what, the idea was to see what they have in mind. I don't think they're ready to roll it out this fiscal year, so allocate some of that $20,000 ahead for the upgrades to finishing off this, the master plan here.
I want to encourage any, any work that you can do with them to make upgrades happen out of the dive park, it's been a long time coming, and I, it is, it is a focal point for town, for sure, not just for the divers, but for people strolling, walking, wanting to just congregate, especially in the summertime, swimmers, all that. But I, I would like to throw out there that any, any monies that the city is going to participate in, I'd like to see some of that include lighting, because you can put all the benches you want, you can put all the trash receptacles you want out there, but at the end of the day, I mean, it's a party spot at night, and, you know, unfortunately, persons that are out there in the dark partying don't necessarily care where their beer bottles and their, their trash goes. So lighting is a key element to that area, and I just wanted to point it out since it was put in the staff report, that I'd love to see the dive park actually lit at night.
Yeah, I met with them in fall originally, I was hoping they'd have something close to the first of the year, they're still working on it, so really anxious to see what they have in mind, so I'll report back.
Did I, here's somebody say something that alluded to we're pulling money away from the trash, trash receptacles, or is that something that we're getting...
I, I had budgeted $20,000 to do some improvements in, in the dive park, at the dive park, and that was to be some benches out there, some trash receptacles out there, some shade out there, some things for, some changing areas for the divers, that I'm gonna hold off on until we see what the island company has in mind, and then revisit it once they have a, their plan laid out.
Yeah, we're having a hard time with the trash cans in town, I'm getting a lot of complaints. We've got a problem with our trash cans being so beat up, and we really gotta do something about it.
And I think Public Works has got a nice project coming forward here pretty soon to do some of that, so, yeah.
I was just gonna say, and we, we're all kind of mumbling, very, very small portion of that property is ours.
Right.
And that's, even when we put that Eagle Scout project up there, that's where it had to be, because that's within their, our footprint, and, so yes, but, but, and then my question would be, why wouldn't this come out of the harbor budget and not out of community services, since harbor can only be spent on harbor, so...
Let's say we do expand on, on our recreation, because that means we're gonna have to budget for a larger workforce to maintain those areas. Are we, are we considering that?
That, I mean, that will all be brought out in terms of part of the plan, you know, a community center of, you know, 5,000 or 10,000 square feet is gonna need X amount of, you know, staff to operate it, you can get facility budget, maintenance budgets out of, you know, out of this process.
We're gonna need that, we'll need more people in the office, and we'll, we'll need more people out in the streets as well, so...
That should all be part of that.
That'll be part of the study, though, right?
Correct.
That was all, yeah, if, there's no other questions, I'll make a motion to authorize Recreation Department a contract with City Fabric in the amount of $33,100 for the city of Avalon's recreation master plan.
When you add up to?
Up to $33,100.
Okay, first and second, comments? Call for the vote.
Four ayes, one no, Councilmember Sampson.
Thank you.
Item number 10.
Okay, so this is the encroachment permit for two decks to encroach to, on the right-of-way to 125 Olive Street. So really just some basic questions. I haven't seen an application like this for many years since planning, so surprised to see it at the council level. And is that because of the encroachment permit the council has to? Okay, so in, in a situation like this, does the city receive any funding for the encroachment? Is there a fee for the encroachment?
There's an encroachment application fee, it's a couple of hundred dollars. And then they, I'm not sure I understand, maybe I don't understand the question.
Well, let's say...
Do we lease them the space?
The what?
Do we lease them the space?
Yeah, I, I honestly don't remember how it works with the encroachment permit in something like decks, but if the city were to need that, that space for some reason, what happens?
We, I think, and I...
That is why one of the conditions is that we can revoke it pursuant to the provision in the municipal code that says that if we subsequently determine we need it, then we can go ahead and revoke it, and then they make a bond or deposit that's on hold with the city to guarantee that if we ever decide, and this applies to any encroachment, if we ever decide that we want that property back, that there's a, there's a security there that covers the cost of the city taking that away if they don't agree to. So that, in other words, if, if we grant the encroachment permit to them, and we, for some reason, in years from now, decide we don't want this anymore, you have to remove it, and they refuse to, then we'll have some security for us to go out and do the work to restore it to the condition prior to the encroachment permit.
And was there any comments from the public on that?
I had a couple of calls about it. There was some people who were confused as to why it was coming to the city council and then going to the planning commission. It's, we're, you look at it, it's kind of like a project with two halves. The planning commission is going to be approving the decks between the house and the property, or they're applying for a variance to have decks between the house and the property line, but then they're also applying for the city council to allow them to use airspace out over the street for an additional three feet. So the city council's approving or considering the encroachment permit beyond their property line into our airspace, and then the planning commission will have to make the findings to support the variance for the deck to be between the house and the property line. This is kind of one of those things, unfortunately, that if the planning commission doesn't make the findings for the variance, the encroachment permit is moot.
And I guess...
Or you have a very odd deck that doesn't connect to the house.
It's part of the council, you, you can direct us to take this to the planning commission first. Our thought is, is that because it's the city's property and the city council controls the property, if the city council doesn't want to allow these people to use their property or encroach the property, then there's nothing for the planning commission to do, because it just dies. If we take it to the planning commission first, and they say, yes, go ahead and do this, and then the city council says, well, that's our property, we don't want this, it dies too, so it's kind of the chicken or the egg.
I need a clarification, because it was my understanding that if the city council denies the encroachment permit, that they could still apply for the variance to build to their property.
Correct.
Yeah, that, that's how I understood it, but I think what is a little bit confusing to me is if you, if we take a, one of the two recently completed homes down on Lower Terrace, for example, the encroachment permits that they've received from the city for their decks to go over the property are like 50 feet in the air, but this particular property doesn't appear to be that, that high up. So when I look at the side, or the left elevation on the plans, it, it looks as though it is just over city property, and I would guesstimate three feet off of the ground.
That sounds about right. If, if you recall, Olive Street actually has a dual lane, and there's a lower one that's right behind the Seaport Village, and then there's an upper one, and that's the cart lane that runs...
It's a sidewalk.
A sidewalk that people draw on with their golf carts.
Sidewalk, carts go.
That people that are on that side of the street access their property from. And then there's a small space beyond that path, that cart path, sidewalk, thank you, Richard, that's unimproved street easement. And that's what they're asking to utilize. So as to what Scott said, if the city suddenly got a grant, and we wanted to widen and make Olive Street all one level, or wider, or whatever, then yes, we would have to tell all the people that we have granted encroachments to that they have to remove those encroachments.
Have there been any complaints so far? Are any people that have been outspoken about?
No. The home right next door, we approved larger decks several years ago. And this property was actually approved for a third-story addition a few months ago, that was going to include some outside deck space. And they've decided to keep it at a two-story home and just make a small addition in the back. And then they came forward and asked to be able to add these small decks in the front.
So this-
And it's not any, I mean, I have walked up there several times. And it doesn't appear, based on the plans that you've given us, it doesn't appear to be anything different than the surrounding houses have on either side of the property.
In fact, looking at the plans-
It actually seems to be less than the width of the decks that are, okay.
And the setbacks? We have three setbacks, three foot setbacks on each side of the house, on three different sides?
There's a really large setback in the back. And I believe there's three on both sides.
So on the, looking at it.
But the decks are only on the front?
Yeah. So if, say, at some point, they wanted to enclose the decks, would they have to come back to planning?
Yes, they would.
Okay.
And they'd probably have to come back to you, too, if you grant the encroachment, because they would be enlarging the amount, the mass of the encroachment.
I don't have any other questions.
This is in the fire department. They'd need to look at this, too.
Craig has looked at it.
He's looked at it, right?
I think.
Amanda, do you know if the other encroachments, did they post a security bond also?
I don't know that they posted the bond. I don't recall ever getting bonds recently. But they all, we are making sure they all give us the proper insurance that lists the city as additional insured.
And then we will be sure to have our building inspector look at this so that it's exactly perfect.
Yes, they'll definitely need building permits.
So we don't end up with a problem like, that's still hanging out there for me years up on the Lisa, Chivlisa thing.
Right. Yes. And in reality, that particular one, somebody misread the plans between seven feet, zero inches, and 70 inches.
I don't want to talk about that one. That may be-
I'm sorry.
That may be coming to the council for code enforcement action.
Thank you, Amanda.
Move staff on 10.
I'll second.
Move to second. Comments? Call for the vote.
All ayes.
Thank you. Item number 11.
We already did that.
Item 12, thank you. Bob Greenlaw.
You're welcome. Bob is down at the bottom.
At the bottom.
You're welcome.
Okay, Bob Greenlaw, Director of Public Works. For this item, it's supposed to be a quick discussion, talking about the scope of the sediment study, and also the development impact fee studies, to bring you more detail of how we're going to handle the tasks and schedule for both of those studies. So in October 2017, we talked about both of these. They were presented to you. And the scope of the additional work request for the sediment study was that we were going to go out and dredge the harbor. So that was 5,000 cubic yards that we were going to focus a dredging operation. So we needed to look at the details of the permitting requirements for that. So that was one item. And then we were going to look at the hydrodynamic intervention program involved how we operate the Catalina Express and how we tie that up so that it's safely operated to get passengers on and off, considering all the different rough conditions that could occur at any time out there. So what can we do differently? Because that was what was causing a lot of the erosion from the beach, was that and the wave action. Okay? So, okay, so that ended up with four tasks that the consultant proposed. And then you added an additional task looking for the funding potential for the state and federal funding. So we ended up with five tasks. So task 5.1 was the dredging alternatives analysis. And that's currently in progress right now. And that was meeting with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, Division in the LA District here. And we looked at the permit requirements for the dredging, numbers, location, the type of sediment samples that will need to be actively addressed, the toxicity as we take this sand and then try to put it back up on our beach. So we need to know what it is before we actually put that back up on the beach, if that's a good option. And then seek guidance on the preferred dredging message and associated water quality monitoring that would be with those operations. That task has already been completed. And then consult with a geotech firm. And that is to be completed in February. And that would develop that sampling plan for that sediment, how far out. And then also, it would discuss the pile groupings, the foundation support, if we did some different groups of piles around where the Catalina Express is, somewhat similar to when you disembark at Long Beach there at the Catalina Express terminal, where you see groups of piles. And so that, then that wouldn't require them to operate their engines, why they're moored. It would allow the float to operate, just go up and down vertically. It wouldn't move horizontally. That would be the hope that we would get out of that. Okay? And then, so that's going to happen in February. And then consult with the dredging contractors, get pre-bid cost estimates, and scheduling constraints. So we would need to be talking about what it would be to be out there in those operations during off time in our harbor, and how that could work with our conditions here. And that would be happening in February also. Task 5.2, the hydrodynamic intervention alternatives. So that's currently in progress. We would be meeting with Catalina Express staff, our past and present harbor masters and other stakeholders, so we can get that history. And a lot of that, also that detail, would add to that, what we're still calling that draft report. And so that we can make that report complete, so that we can, there's a lot of people that have been around here a lot of years that can add to that. And so that we're looking at this in holistic view. So we'd be looking to talk about the modification of the docking practices, the Catalina Express boats with their management. And that's, we're scheduling those now for late January. The modification to the Caprio Mole floating docks, that would prevent those docks from freely oscillating. So that's the pile groupings. And then construct a deflection wall extending outward from the seawall, immediately downdrift west of the floating docks. Well, it could be there, or it could be anywhere, all the way back up to where it was originally located before it failed there. So, and the consultant is modeling that and working in what it would be the shortest possible configuration, but also is looking at other alternatives, too. So they can present an array of alternatives to you. And that would be happening in late January. Then task 5.3, research the available state and federal funding early February. And then the project management, the meetings are underway throughout the whole project here in the second phase. And then-
Bob, can I just interrupt you and have you forward the slides?
Yes.
So we can keep up with you?
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I'm not managing my presentation. There we go. And then task 5.5, draft and final supplemental technical memorandum. So that draft is scheduled for late February. So late February, we've been talking to you, or early March, depending on what the comments are. So that is what, in a quick snapshot, what we're doing right now. Is there any input into anything that we think that we need to add, that we don't have in a very broad brush look at this?
So on the broad brush, there's, where does the, not the funding alternatives, but where does the dollar amount come in?
The dollar amount will be in the technical memorandum.
Okay.
Okay? That will be, so the draft report, except for adding, you know, some of the corrections that we want to make, like we were talking about at the initial presentation. But also, as we receive additional information from that historical knowledge, we put that and then we finalize that report. That report is done. So that was the one that was presented to you. On top of that, will become this technical memorandum that starts talking about all the different details of this, the funding, and, you know, all the different alternatives that we can start from. Okay?
And then refresh my memory. What part of, this part is already funded, have we approved? Or have we not approved the cost of all of this?
We have already approved the initial $50,000. And this was in the range of $60,000 additional work. We've already approved that. We're working on that.
Okay.
Yes.
So in a perfect world, we get the draft like February or March or whatever, and then finalized. And then, I mean, is this a two-year project?
We have permitting. We're out, we have U.S. Army Corps, we have Regional Water Quality Control Board, and then we have the Coastal Commission.
So our-
Each of those, you know, we all sigh when we have that. But it's, that's, those are pretty heavy permits.
And, go back to the first, can we do any of the dredging before all of this, to get some sand dug up or no?
We need to have the permits to be able to dredge.
We've got to have everything, everything. So the beach is going to look like this for a while?
I don't see us getting those permits right away. I think that it's another year out. But also, it's the funding. So it's how we raise the funds. There is, which, we were approached by Division of Boating and Waterways, that says they have funding available to do this. But their funding cycle is like in, I think, 1920, the fiscal year 1920. So imagine it getting approved then. And then, you know, we could be in fiscal year 2021 before we actually, if that is our funding source. So we want to give you all the array of options, so that you can make a decision on that. Because-
Sounds like the funding source is going to be just in time. I mean, that is when we start needing-
And that's what we're looking from this technical memorandum, because there will be discussions, there already has been discussions with U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, excuse me, with the Coastal Commission, what is the length of time we would predict that it would take to get the permits?
And then, if this takes a year or two, are we going to be in worse shape by the time that comes around, with the way we're currently doing stuff?
You know, could lose a little bit more.
But the change in mold isn't that big of a thing. If we were, if we're going to try to put in the different piling system to keep the express out of gear, we can probably get that done a little quicker.
Hopefully.
We still need permits for that, no? Need permits just to-
Yes.
Yeah, but little permits.
Anytime you're touching that seafloor, which we would.
What I don't see in here, and I've mentioned it before, and it might not be something that we even include in this, is a ramp into the water. Like, I know we used to have a ramp on the south side of South Beach that went all the way down into the water. It'd be nice if we could replace that, just for an emergency pullout, and also for handicap access to the water. That's people in wheelchairs and people in complex situations that can't get down through the sand and over that little wall. Because I'm assuming that the step is going to be like it was when we were kids, like we see in the picture with the sea plane on the beach, where, you know, you got, I remember it fluctuated between 12 and 18 inches, just to step down to the beach. And it was usually 6, 12, 18 inches. And it kind of stayed that way for a long time. Dissipated over a long period of time. Some of it was taken away by dump trucks. But I would say that it's not going to get any better. I'm not an expert, but I'll tell you one thing, it's been getting worse every time we get a storm, and that wall keeps getting undermined. I don't know, we can last two years. Is there any way to put an emergency work order in this?
There are emergency permits, something-
We're about to lose our-
I know.
We're about to lose our entire beachfront right now.
I think something more devastating than the last event would have to happen for us to pull that trigger.
It's going to happen. Because the lower it gets, the worse it gets. And every storm, it gets lower and it gets worse. You and I sat there and watched it. The section over there that had sand was unaffected by the waves, by the pier. The section that had the least amount of sand was most affected by the swells, because they were breaching right at the base of the wall. Where the sand still is present on the beach, over by the pier, was relatively unaffected by the waves. They'd already broken, then they splash up to the wall. They break well before the wall. So I would really like to see this pushed forward in an emergency fashion, for when we need it for the aesthetics of the community, we need it for the safety of the waterfront and the structures that that wall protects. And it's the jewel of Avalon, when people walk into town.
Yeah.
So if there's any way we could push harder, push forward harder, and reach out to maybe grant writing companies that could come in and maybe help us write grants or find grants throughout the United States, that would-
So I think there is a source of funding, which you will hear when we, with this technical memorandum. It's just that time period. And I believe there's other funding that would be available for the seawall and that as a future project as we build the CIP. Okay? So I think that all of what you're talking about can be taken care of. I can inquire with the Coastal Commission on what the steps would be under emergency permit, just to give us that ready to go, if something devastated did happen, so that we'd be prepared for that.
It happens every time we get an event now. Every single time we get an event, something else collapses. And we can keep filling in cement, but it's going to keep breaching underneath there. Because the natural slope of this canyon goes down, it used to go all the way down to the beach. Now, it goes down to Upper Beach, the upper part section of the beach, and it drops down 12, 15 feet. That's the problem right now, that I'm seeing, is it's going against nature, is what we're fighting. Nature is, we're trying to hold back Mother Nature. And she's going to, she's going to give us a little bit of a wrath in the future. And that wall's not going to hold up. I don't care how thick we make the concrete, it's going to go underneath, and that whole wall's going to collapse. And then we're really going to be in trouble. So I just, I think you're doing great work, and I appreciate it. I appreciate you, the attention that you're giving this.
Okay.
And pushing forward.
Okay.
Anything we can do to support you, we will.
Second part of this, so is there any other comments on the sediment study? Okay? We're good to go on that then. Okay? So, and then it's the draft diff report. I don't see the second report up.
Comes Bob.
So, that being said, it should be looking like this.
There was still a, it's not this one right here?
Yeah, okay. Just looks different than, okay. Jordan helped me out at the end of the day here to get everything up on the computer here. Okay. So, as I said before, again, in October 2017, we talked about the draft development impact fee, what was presented to you. So this first slide here shows what we came up, what was presented to you, what would be the draft fees. And I just wanted to show you, because this is really what the end product will be when we get done with this. But the numbers may be drastically changed. And I've experienced this at other parts of my career at other agencies. So this is what it will look like. But that's the finished product. So let's go to the next slide, Bob. Okay. So how we get these numbers is these calculations are based- So how we get these numbers is these calculations are based on data and assumptions, okay? And that's really the work ahead of us for the next few months, is as we look, the gross projections are based on occupancy rates, population, housing and employment estimates, land use categories, service population. And then it's also based on a project list. And those project lists come from CIPs, plans, whatever you can throw in the hopper. So all of those things, when they're put into this machine, this development impact fee generating machine, it, it comes up with these fees. So you can see that it's very important at the early onset of this to really make sure that each of these are correct. And those are the pieces that we'll be working with, with the stakeholders, to make sure that we're, that we're correct. And so, so each one of these categories, we, because we have 10 categories, that each one of these categories, all our assumptions are correct. Or at least we agree on, you know, that we're close, okay? Okay, next. Okay, so tasks and schedules. So this is really the steps for the implementation is to circulate the document. So that's what we want to do now, and really get that out for 30 days through mid-February. And so, and we'd be looking for questions from stakeholders, general public, what's this mean? How did you calculate that? What's this term mean? And we make ourselves available so that we can answer those questions. And then what we want to do is, we want to hold stakeholder meetings. And so those can be individual, so for bigger entities, you can have just a meeting with those entities so they can understand, you know, if they're into development, how that's going to, each one of these fees, how it impacts them. And then in general, we would hold a public, you know, a general workshop in here just for everybody in the community so that we can answer their questions. So, and then our next step would be to adjust the document. So we complete this by the end of March. So we can add and delete categories, we can adjust assumptions, and we can add and delete projects. So if you, for example, you look at the transportation projects and you go, I don't see a project that would, I know that development would impact that, and there's not a project to address that. We could look at that project and, and put a project together and put an estimate together good enough for the development impact fees. Okay, one more time. Oh my gosh. Okay. So, as usual.
Are you having to do all this by yourself, Bob?
This is staff.
I mean, and all these, all these meetings and all this stuff going forward, it's quite a bit.
Yes, it is. We have, do have a consultant, very good consultant.
Okay. So we're now back on the last page of that. Okay, so we'll recirculate the modified document. We'll complete that by mid-April. Okay, so all those iterations, all those assumptions, now we start perfecting it. And then we meet with the stakeholders as needed, because usually what happens, you modify something, somebody's going to have some additional questions, and we'll complete that by the end of April, so, you know, another half a month. Then we'll finalize the study document by mid-May. Okay? And then we have to hold a public meeting and adopt the fees. And so sometime around the June period, we'd be doing that. And then there's a 60-day waiting period before those fees go into effect. Okay? So that's August. So, and I guess one of the questions is, what's going to slide by? You know, why we don't have this adopted? Right now, in, in talking with our planning director, we don't see a lot of projects that are big in scope that we can't condition that these fees, they'd be applicable to these fees. That's what we could do if there was a larger development coming down the pike. Right now, we just don't see the projects in this time period that would be amount to much in the fees if something did come.
But even, even one house is $36,000, and right now, all we're getting is permit fees, correct?
That's correct. And that's one brand-new house. Most of the stuff that's happening is remodeling, it's already entitled. So, and so it's based on that occupancy.
And we would have the ability, if a house of a new construction came in on a new lot, to condition that on payment of the fees. We just have to support how we came up with the actual fee.
Like the parking fee? That, I don't understand that one.
So there is a impact from vehicles being added. So if you added, say, 150 units, is there's 150 new potential auto vehicles? Maybe? Okay, is where, now we're not just putting those on that site, could they, as they go into our waterfront area, where, where you're going to park? And how do we afford to allow that parking? And maybe, you know, what do we do?
So it could be a structure.
Could be a structure.
Okay.
So how do you buy that property? And, you know, repurpose a site for parking? That would be public parking. So that's, that's what that addresses. And that's what a lot of these workshops will be, is like, hey, just define this, that we got this right, it's this. And what's that mean if we added, you know, 1,000 residents? What, what's that mean? And that means this many vehicles, well, where are we going to park? And so then we dig into that. Okay? So that's where those specifics come out. So that's the schedule for that. Is there any, are we on the right track?
I think so.
Okay. Well, more to come.
No, this is great.
Nicely done.
Okay. Just wanted to check in with you.
I have a question. I don't know where this comes up, and it, maybe not a Bob Greenlaw question, but can we, with these development fees, look at how we may want to spend them? Like, for example, if we want to keep 1% aside for public art projects and that kind of thing, we do that at some other time? Because some people use development fees to.
Well, for a public arts project, you'd have to have a separate funding ordinance or regulation that would say that when you do development, you set aside a certain percent for a public art project.
Like 1% of, of everything that comes in?
Yeah. Like, I think Cerritos, I mean, I've worked on that with Cerritos. They have that.
Yeah. So, but that's a different.
That's a different thing. That's a different fee that the council directed. We could bring back some examples.
Well, I'm not saying a different fee, because some of them just take it out of the development fees. Take 1% out of the development fees instead of making another fee.
Right. You still have to have a mechanism for doing that.
Okay.
Would that be the same for salary too, or something? Say, a developer's fee, say we want to hire a building inspector, could we take part of that, go towards the fee of?
Yes.
Our building inspector?
Yes. Well, what will happen on these development fees when they come before the council is there'll be a detailed study as to what the additional costs to the city are for all these developments. And then we, we calculate the fee to reimburse the city for all its increased infrastructure, as well as if we have to hire people for it. So, so that would be part of this fee study.
So that number is pretty much already in there, right? Administrative fees and the, and the planning.
There is administrative fees in there. To say exactly what's in there, I would have to dig in. And to be correct, I would say I can point right to that calculation. And that's really how I want to talk about this.
Until we do the background reports and, you know, and all the reports.
But it was already there to get to these numbers.
And if you do have a question like that, please ask it early so we can dig in and show you, and we can give you that accurate answer right off the bat, okay?
So for example, for example, and then we can put this rest. Okay, when you talk about recycled water and the number 228574 comes up, those, or pick any of those numbers, Bob, it doesn't even matter, but to come up with any of those numbers, they would have had to look at staff time. It's not just grown out of the air. There's staff time in there, there's, what's, what's in that number?
It's all those assumptions I was talking, all those data points, all that's built into those formulas. And for different fees, there's different things involved.
So all of that's already been brought in?
And when you get into, if you look at that draft impact fee study, you'll see the calculations and what supports that calculation.
Exactly. That's what I'm saying. Yes. That's what I thought. Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks.
Good job.
Yeah, very good, Dallas. Okay. All right, if there's no further comments, we have closed session. Would you like to report out on that?
Yeah, we have a potpourri of closed sessions. Number one is public employee dismissal, discipline and release. Number two is conference with real property negotiators regarding the Casino Point property priced in terms of payments, as well as we have another conference with legal counsel, initiation of litigation associated, again, with the Casino Point property concerning the options the city has with the Santa Catalina Island property. For those two items, council members Hernandez and Cassidy McGugan would be recusing themselves due to economic income from the island company. We have another initiation of litigation that is to discuss the current situation with the e-buses. And then we have significant exposure to litigation. That's one case that regards a letter we received from the island company. On that matter, council member Sampson would be recusing himself from that matter, since the letter concerns him.
Okay. All right. What about? And you're ready, Mr. Scott?
There was no reportable action under pursuant to the Brown Act categories.
Thank you. Good night, Tony.
Good night, Tony.